Good evening and welcome. I would like to call this meeting to order and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I need a motion to accept the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion from trustee Shola Barber. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second from vice chair McGlynn, trustee Johnson. Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Shola Barber?
Yes.
Trustee Payton?
Yes.
Trustee Hill?
Yes.
Trustee McGlynn?
Yes.
And I say yes. Ms. Coney?
Yes. It looks like we have some recognitions that we need to do.
Yes, thank you President Harrison. We're delighted to be here this evening in Edison Academy and be recognizing students from Edison. So I'd like to introduce their proud principal, Dr. Julie McDonald.
The green light is on. I am proud to stand here and recognize six of our 5th graders. They were nominated by their classroom teachers for following our AAA expectations and those stand for achievement, attitude, and attendance. They're doing a great job following those. Achievement means they're doing their best in class every day that they are here. Attitude means that they are being great students, sitting in class, doing their jobs, and attendance means they are here more than 90% of their school day, their school year so far. First, we have Ashley Nahera Eskon. She gets to shake her hands first. Go ahead honey. And I just want to give a shout out to all the Edison staff that are here today too.
Our second and final student recognition this evening are some student athletes from Maple Street Magnet School for the Arts and I'd like to introduce their cross-country coach, Jacqueline Borman.
Hi, good evening. Is that okay, volume wise? All right. My name is Jacqueline Borman. I am the head coach of the Maple Street Cross Country Team. Thank you for letting us come tonight and honor some pretty special athletes. I'm speaking on behalf of the coaching staff and our athletic director. I'm going to call their names and then kind of while they're shaking hands, I'd like to say a little bit more about them because they did some pretty great stuff this season. We brought five athletes with us to represent the 61-member team who won the KPS City Championships for the third year in a row. So athletes, when I call your name, if you want to start maybe on that end and then come around this way and then you can pick up your certificate. Wyatt Foley. Cody Lamb. And Essie Remboitz. These five individuals were major contributors to our team and they were imperative to our success this season. They consistently placed in every race as point scorers for the team. All five of them won medals at the KPS City Championship Meet and at the CAMSA League Meet. In addition, Cody, Wyatt, and Essie also won medals at Regionals. Lastly, all five of them are excellent students and have a GPA above a 3.5.
Come in front, over this way. Come over this way friends.
Cody Lamb also needs a moment of singular recognition, the young man in the glasses there. He was the city, league, and regional champion, winning all three of those races. He broke, he broke the school record for the two-mile race that was his own record from last season and a new time, mind you, this is two miles, 10 minutes and 32 seconds. Cody will be running at Nationals in Indiana on December 13th.
That concludes our recognitions this evening.
Thank you. In my excitement, I forgot to have Secretary Hill take attendance. Can you please take attendance, Secretary Hill?
All trustees are present and Dr. Slade is also present.
Thank you. Next up, we will have committee reports and school reports. Governance? Matt, did you report out already? Governance.
Thank you. Governance, we are looking at our district policies and starting to come up with a schedule for review so that we can be as up-to-date and supportive of all the students in our district as we can.
Thank you. Community Relations has met for the month. Yep. Operations, did you report out? Oh, then go ahead.
Community Relations met and we discussed, help me with the committee, trustee Johnson.
This meeting? We discussed partnering with the young lady in regards to the more community engagement meetings and supporting the Christmas, there's a Christmas event that we're supposed to be supporting in community and I cannot recall the name. But I know that Ms., is it Ms. Dewey? It's over, Dr. Dewey, it's over that event and we are working to support that event and it is in December.
We discussed fundraising, we discussed various things like that also.
Yes.
Yeah.
Very much. It's a lot that needed to be discussed further too.
Thank you. Operations? Nope, no problem. Academic Excellence, met and we've already discussed that one. Superintendent Evaluation, met. And CIS.
CIS had a meeting today and their 20th Century, 21st Century Grant did come in, so this is big for them. Their, their budget's at 6 million right now. They're 80% through their year and so they feel like they'll have a surplus or a base of 4 million at the end of this year. They feel like they're in good shape now, but the long game, they're very concerned about. There was much discussion about the ugly sweater, ugly sweater party and I think, Ms. Coney, could you give us a little bit about that?
Sure. We'll have a slide on it a little bit later, but it is coming up on December 9th.
And the community is, is welcome, plus there's a challenge to this board that the CIS rep is supposed to bring five board members to this party. So you'll be getting the call, you'll be getting the call. They had a great Walk With A Purpose year and that's a big fundraiser for them and a shout out to Woodward. Woodward raised $6,000 of the total. They, they feel in the end that they will have $60,000. But Woodward itself raised 6,000 of it and they have been the leader of our schools. We had seven schools that participated it. They feel like they had over, let me see, close to 1,000 people were walking for them. And they also were very pleased that several companies used this effort as their wellness initiative. So they had 20% more participants this year than last year. They were very enthused about doing their site visit. I don't know if any of, anybody was involved in the site visit, but they were very, I think was it Maple Street that this last site visit? And they're really encouraging board members or anyone who's interested in CIS to attend a site visit. And what that is, is that you are guided through the day or, and it's only maybe about a 90-minute excursion, but you're guided through the day of a site coordinator in the building. So you really get to see where your dollars and your volunteer and whatever goes. And anybody that's gone through them, it's amazing to see how, how dynamic and effective the site coordinators and the volunteers and the schools are. What they are interested in is more volunteers and they need them in many capacities and they do a very intentional training with the volunteers. And that is, a volunteer is not just placed randomly. If they need someone for, say a student at CAMSA Central who's having trouble with calculus, they'll really look for someone who has that expertise so that it isn't a one-size-fits-all and that the volunteer feels very much that they're doing good work and effective work as well as the student feels that there's, there's a connection. It's all about relationships and volunteering and they call it the art of volunteering. So that was really interesting. They are definitely doing a strategic plan like we are and very interested in, they launched it this year and they're planning great efforts to measure their progress and use it as a guide for the next five years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Secretary Hill, will you read correspondence?
Yes, we received four correspondence through the email. On 11/9, from Sheri Webber, looking, she's working with Invest In Kids, it's a proposal for the ballot. And she sent that to us also that we could read it. And Dr. Slade replied and I replied. And then on 11/10, we received an email from Riley Smith regarding field trip and transportation cost and Dr. Slade replied and I replied. And then on 11/12, Jason Lazator regarding concerns at King Westwood and Dr. Slade's replied and I replied. And then on 11/8, whoopsie, I'm out of order, Glenn Deutsch, he had spoken at the school board and he had sent us his notes, which we encourage people to do that so that we can reread what was said. It's better than watching ourselves on TV. And I replied to that one. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the consent calendar and I need a motion to accept the calendar.
So moved.
Right? Okay. And then I need a second?
Second.
I have a motion from trustee Shola Barber. I have a second from trustee McGlynn and now we'll have discussion. Ms. Kaser.
Well, thank you President Harrison. We have seven purchase recommendations this evening. The first is request number 2026-12 in the amount of $89,645.85 and this is for furniture for the district kitchen and this will be funded from the 2018 bond. Next, we have purchase recommendation request number 2026-13 in the amount of $45,523.50 and this is to purchase three weapon detection systems. And this will be funded from the Section 31AA Security and Safety Mental Health Grant. Next, we have purchase recommendation 2026-14 in the amount of $269,468.64. This is to purchase classroom furniture at Millwood Magnet School and this will be funded from the 2022 bond. Purchase recommendation 2026-15 is in the amount of $43,295.87 and this will purchase custodial equipment for the district kitchen and Southwestus School. The 2018 bond will fund $17,349.39 and the 2022 bond will fund $25,946.48. Next is purchase recommendation 2026-16 in the amount of $264,840.84 and this will purchase student tables for four elementary schools and this will be funded from the 2022 bond. The schools will include Arcadia, Parkwood Upjohn, Woods Lake, and Woodward. Next, we have purchase recommendation 2026-17 in the amount of $232,503.09 and this is to purchase Section 35M Literacy Materials and this is funded from instruction. Next, we have purchase recommendation 2026-18 in the amount of $427,350 and this is for the wall replacement at Southwestus School. And this is funded from the Facilities Management Cost Center. As you recall, this wall was damaged by a car accident in September and we expect that this will be reimbursed through insurance.
Discussion from the board. Trustee Shola Barber.
I just have one small notice. Of the seven purchase orders, there, five of them are funded by bonds. So I think it's incredibly important that we thank the people who helped us raise the money or raise awareness and gather the votes for the bond. And I think that the people of the city or of the district that supported us, it's very important to thank you at this point. We need to do all the things that are in all seven of these, but if we can get funding from five of these, these items from bonds, that gives us so much more to use our money as far as instruction goes. So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Trustee Hill.
I was looking at the literacy materials and I really appreciate the tactile things, the things that you can touch. That's how I learn the best is by looking at something, reading it, association, and touching it. That's because I'm a nurse. But, and it just looks like multisensory things. I see teachers natty out there. Yeah. You know, mirrors, trifold boards, foamy dice, letters, those things I think are all very important, especially for the young ones to learn. So I'm glad that's included. Thank you.
Trustee McGlynn.
I also appreciate all the literacy pieces, but I did, I, one of the things that sometimes I think people forget about is that sometimes you look at these big dollars and they think, well, why do we spend it on this and why don't we have more teachers or whatever? But the big, the big thing is, is these are all dollars that do come from bond and they have very specific purposes. And they are for things like chairs and tables and facilities and, and things, not people. So those are all very important too, but I do think sometimes people get confused on that. So just to clarify that a little bit. And yeah, that's, there's a lot, a lot here today. So, thank you.
Trustee Johnson.
So, I do have two questions. Do we know how much we would stand to be reimbursed for the fixing of this wall from insurance?
Yes, I believe most all of it would be reimbursed. Maybe we might have a small deductible, but other than that, it would be reimbursed.
Okay, that's wonderful. And my second question is, when we buy all the new tables, what do we do with the old items?
That's a good question. Many times we, I think we take them to auction and recoup some monies from those.
And recoup some, some, something is better than nothing, right?
Exactly.
Okay. Just checking. But otherwise, thank y'all. I'm so grateful that the bonds are in place because I'm watching how certain things are able to pull apart from this cost center and apart from that. And it, it all works out so that our kids miss nothing. So, thank y'all so much for your hard work.
Seeing no further discussion, we will now have a roll call vote. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Shola Barber?
Yes.
Trustee Payton?
Yes.
Trustee Hill?
Yes.
Trustee McGlynn?
Yes.
And I say yes. Next up are reports and recommendations.
All right, good evening. I want to, first of all, welcome everyone here to this beautiful facility. We decided a few months ago to have at least two traveling board meetings and the purpose of a traveling board meeting is to kind of bring the board meeting into the community. We do have some folks in our community that sometimes have transportation issues, so we wanted to provide an opportunity for some folks who may not have a chance to come to our board meetings to be able to experience what a CalMz board meeting is like. Again, I want to thank the entire staff of Edison. Edison is one of our top schools, if you're not aware, for the past few years, has been one of the schools that has demonstrated the most growth in every single subject. It is one of our model schools for instructional practice, meaning we have some of the best teachers in the city and I would say state that work here at Edison. And I also know Dr. McDonald is very humble, but I say this all the time about Dr. McDonald, she is one of our top principals. And the, and the great thing about that is that if you ask other principals in the city, name the two top principals in the city, 90% of them will, will say Dr. McDonald. So I want to give her a big round of applause myself for her hard work. I tell people all the time, it's, it's hard to have consistent growth in a school and this is something that happens every single year at Edison. Again, I want to thank the magnificent staff, the superstar principal, and the amazing students here at Edison. So one part of being the whole school for a traveling board meeting is you get to present the great things happening at your school. So we're going to have Dr. McDonald come up now and share all the wonderful things happening at Edison. I also want to just thank Dr. Dyson, who is Assistant Superintendent for all elementary schools, and Ms. Coney and Mr. Graff for the work, and this gentleman over here who's one of our newest staff members for the hard work they put into getting this building ready for a board meeting. So again, thank you.
Thank you for having me. Welcome to Edison. It's hard to believe this is year three in this building already. So, yes, year three. Dr. Dyson asked me if we could have the board meeting at Edison. I said absolutely and then she slid in a couple of days later, oh by the way, you need to present. So here I am. Thank you to my staff for staying and, you know, hanging out with me. So, all right. So what is it about Edison? It's my 14th year at Edison. It's my 38th overall. I'm giving away my age. Currently, I have 11 probationary teachers and 13 tenured teachers, but what's interesting is that of the probationary teachers, five were hired after their internships at Edison. So they already knew Edison before they started their first year. One was a long-term sub hired after a year-long assignment. One was a CIS after-school program staff while pursuing her teaching degree. One was a retired teacher that was one of my teachers in another district. She retired, came back to work for us as a retired teacher tutor and then when I had a math-science position available, she's like, I asked her, she, first she said, "Oh no, I'm not coming back." But then after being here for two years as a tutor, working with this amazing staff, she wanted to be part of it, so she came back to be part of the staff. And then we have one that chose to transfer to Edison from another KPS building. And our teachers typically stay at Edison unless there's a job opportunity or some life event. I've had a couple that their families are on the east side of the state, so they've moved back. We've created four principals, two have stayed in KPS, two went to other districts. We have a content coordinator, our math-science coordinator was an Edison teacher. Two of our academic coaches. Two of our staff members went to KRESA and then last year, for the first time in my, will be 13 years then, I had three retirements that retired from, from Edison. So this year, we have a lot of new staff because we had some openings. But consistency is key. I think it was Dr. Slade that talked about consistency. We need to be consistent. I don't think we would be where we are if the teachers didn't stay and if I hadn't been here for as many years as I've been here. We have two initiatives that we really work on in that consistency and one is capturing kids' hearts in the section, second is Kagan Cooperative Learning. First, I want to talk about capturing kids' hearts. The purpose of it is to build positive, trust-filled classrooms and school cultures. We want our students to feel safe, seen, and supported. The core belief is that relationships come first. We need to make sure that our kids know that we, we love them, we want them here. We create those strong adult-student connections that drive their behavior. We want strong engagement and we want a lot of learning. Capturing kids' hearts functions on the Excel framework and I've looked at this PowerPoint 150 times and I have, I have a typo. The L is not lead, it's launch, but anyway. Excel stands for engage, expect, Excel, connect, I have two typos, empower, and launch. And why it works is that we want to reduce our disruptive behavior in office referrals. We want to increase attendance, engagement, and student willingness to take academic risks. And I am proud to say with the support and help of our full-time home support specialists, we have 76% of our kids regularly attending. We're down to a 24% chronic absenteeism rate at this point. So we're really making some gains there. Why it works? We're reducing disruptive behavior in office referrals. Again, we're increasing attendance, engagement, and students' willingness. We're strengthening our student-teacher trust and improving our classroom climate and it supports all of our SEL developments in everyday instruction. The best part of it's, it's not an add-on, it's part, it's what we do. It's not something that we have to add on to the already rigorous curriculum that we have. The next one is Kagan Cooperative Learning and we have done instructional rounds in this building since 2017 and it, it has led us to strategies for student engagement. We wanted to really up our student engagement in the classroom. And so we dug into Kagan Cooperative Learning and it does increase student engagement. The core belief is that learning is stronger when students are doing the work more than the teachers are doing the work. The students need to go home more tired than the teachers. And it's based on four principles. We want to make sure there's simultaneous interaction. Everybody's working at the same time. There's positive interdependence. We're trying to get away from calling on one because that creates negative interdependence. If you ever go into a classroom and you've got one student raising their hand and you call on them, the other ones are like, "Oh." And then they really want them to be wrong so they can answer, that's negative interdependence. We want to, we want to shoot for the positive interdependence. We want equal participation. We don't want what we coin hogs and logs. We don't want one person hogging the conversation and then the other person just sitting back and saying, "Okay, they can do this, I don't have to participate." So it takes that part away and it creates that individual accountability that every student's responsible for learning and then they can demonstrate it. Why Kagan works? It's not group work. Group work doesn't work. Teamwork does work because we put the, the principles into play. It increases our time on task, quantity and quality of academic talk. It improves retention, problem-solving, and higher-order thinking. Peers are explaining their thinking to each other, so their thinking becomes visible and out loud. Teacher talk time is less and student practicing opportunities are greater and it supports our social skills. We put a lot of social skills in place. It connects to capturing kids' hearts, particularly in the connect and empower area of capturing kids' hearts in the Excel model. But the structures of cooperative learning can enhance all of the areas of the Excel framework of capturing kids' hearts. And again, it's not an add-on. You can take any worksheet that you, that you have, any story that you read and put a Kagan structure in place. the Excel framework of Capturing Kids' Hearts. And again, it's not an add-on. You can take any worksheet that you, that you have, any story that you read, and put a Kagan structure in place. So how do they combine? I just talked about that a little bit. It replaces fragmented classroom practices with in- with inconsistent expectations. Every teacher in the building has the same expectation for students. And both Capturing Kids' Hearts and Kagan have coaching, um, incorporated within the, the framework. We're creating consistency across our classrooms. We're amplifying our relational trust and academic routines, and we want the kids to know what they're gonna get when they come to school. They don't have to guess what it looks like when they come to school every day. And we make it very conducive to learning. We're hoping to see a decline in school-ride referrals. We've already seen improved attendance, and teacher reports of fewer behavior interruptions. We're hoping for that. And we have seen some early benchmark gains. And we will be digging into this data, particularly after our second day of Kagan Structures Training. And I wanna thank Dr. Dyson for allowing my staff to have the October twenty-second PD Day and December tenth PD Day. Um, we worked it out so I could have the whole day as building PD, and we're bringing Kagan trainers in. And so we're getting days one and two of that training, so everybody will be on the same page. So what is happening at Edison? Lots of things. So, in two thousand four, all the way back in two thousand fourteen, the district offered us to pilot Capturing Kids' Hearts. We did. It was great, and as new teachers came on, we, the, the staff that was here told teachers, "This is what we do at Edison." And then, in two thousand seventeen, we became part of the WMU, um, Hill Project, and we used the, uh, Teacher Leader Survey to lead our Hill efforts. During that time, we strengthened our routines and transitions. We strengthened small-group instruction and really dug into gradual release of responsibility. And then, we were really recognized by the Hill Project and sent others to visit and observe our building. And then in two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three, um, Calhoun ISD and KRESA asked us to host the Whole Child Cross-County Collaborative to observe our SEL initiatives, basically based on Capturing Kids' Hearts. And after that, from twenty-three to twenty-five, Marshall, Elby, and Harrington contacted me because they wanted to see a building that was very much like their building. Because when Elby and became part of Marshall, there wasn't a building that really looked like them. So we worked closely with them. They had, um, a group come and visit several times. We had a group go and visit their building. And, um, one of the questions they asked was, "Where would you start? If you were us, where would you start?" And it was overwhelming Capturing Kids' Hearts came out of the staff. So it prompted us to revisit Capturing Kids' Hearts, because when we did a, a recharge in two thousand twenty-four, I was like, "Oh, yeah, that's why we do that, and it's Capturing Kids' Hearts." It's just what we do. And so, um, we now have traction visits with, um, a strategic, uh, from Capturing Kids' Hearts. We use their perception surveys. We use the Teacher Leader Survey again to have an, identify five Capturing Kids' Hearts Process Champions. I have three of them here. Danielle Burley, Sarah Powell, Stacy Pruitt, chosen by their, their colleagues to lead our efforts. And then in two thousand twenty-four, three teachers and I attended the Kagan Cooperative Learning Five-Day Institute in Detroit. Then in two thousand twenty-five, the five Process Champions attended the Kagan Summer Academy and attended Kagan Cooperative Learning Five-Day Institute. While they were there, instead of sitting through it again, I, I attended Kagan Coaching, Higher Order Thinking, and Lesson Planning during the Summer Academy. Because when you send that many teachers, administrators get to go for free. Registration's free, anyway. Um, so then, we are doing two days of training, and, or we did two days of training in August for staff that were not trained in two thousand fourteen on Capturing Kids' Hearts. So now ninety-five percent of our staff that we have are Capturing Kids' Hearts-trained fully. After October twenty-second and December tenth PD, um, ninety-two percent of our staff will have two, the two days of training. And I talked to one of the trainers after the five days in, um, this summer, and said, "Where would you start?" Because I really wanted to try to become a model school, but that's a lot. Couldn't quite figure that out when we didn't know where Title I funding was and all of the things we just, there's a lot you have to do to be a model school. And so when I talked to Tom Finnegan, who I actually trained with in the nineties, I was a, a Kagan trainer with Tom, he said, "Do days one and two. They're gonna have thirteen structures that they can use over and over, and it's going to raise your student achievement." So that's what we did for October twenty-second, December tenth, started with the two, the first two days. I am offering Kagan Coaching to all the teachers. They can invite me in. It's fun to do. Um, I'm working to send the five Capturing Kids' Hearts Process Champions to Kagan Coaching Training so they can get into classrooms and train their colleagues as well. Hoping to do that during the winter academies. I just have to see where my budget is. And then in two thousand twenty-six, um, I'm also working to offer hopefully days three through five of the Five-Day Institute in the summer of twenty twenty-six. Some things you would see at Edison if you walked in on any given day. We all meet in the gym every morning. It helps us gauge our day, so we start, they come off the bus, they come, parents drop them off, and everybody's in the gym, they're in their lines by teacher. We have a hundred and twenty beats-per-minute music playing at seven fifty in the morning until about eight oh four, when the teachers are on duty. Sometimes I say, "Find your friends," and they're walking around the gym doing things. We've done things like, um, Kagan has silly sports and games, and, uh, we've taught them bear, mosquito, no, bear, salmon, bear, salmon, mosquito, which is like rock, paper, scissors. Bear beats salmon, salmon beats mosquito, mosquito beats bear, and they play that in the morning. It's just to take on the other, or we played Magic Six. So one, two, three, and they put out fingers and they try to add it to six, so we can get some academic fun in in the morning. But once it hits eight oh four-ish, we move the music to sixty beats per minute. And kids start bringing it down. We do some breathing. We breathe together where we breathe in for four, we hold it for four, we breathe out for four. We've done three, three, and six. And then I watched a video where the NFL players are breathing in for four, they're holding it for four, and then they're breathing it out for eight, so we breathe NFL-style. We have several reminders of our AAA expectations every morning. We talk about our zones of regula- regulation. Staff was trained in two thousand twenty-three. Talk about there's no bad zone, but the best zone for learning is green, so we're giving you tools to be in the green zone. And on Fridays, we do golden ticket attendance, so students that are here a hundred percent of the time for a week, we do it every week. Get a golden ticket that goes in, I don't know what those things are called, those raffle things, goes in there, and then every marking period, we draw one name for a tablet. Must be present to win, and we draw it on the morning of a half-day. Um, let's see. If you, if you walked around and, walked around the buildings, you would see Capturing Kids' Hearts in play. You'd see greetings at the door in the morning, coming back from specials, coming back from lunch. You'd see a social contract that was built with the teacher and the students in every classroom. We actually have a staff social contract as well. You'll hear teachers and my behavior specialist and any adult in the building using the four questions for misbehavior, asking them what they're doing, what should they be doing, can they do that, and what will happen if you don't. And it's important to do that without a look on your face or a tone in your voice. You'll see Kagan Cooperative Learning. Students should be working in pairs or teams. And you'll see pies in action, and you'll see Kagan Coaching in classrooms. You'll see AAA expectations either being followed or talked about. You would see fidelity checks and data digs. You won't see perfection, but you'll see an entire staff working together with a common language and a common goal of teaching, learning, student engagement, and mutual respect. And in Capturing Kids' Heart style, I'm gonna leave this with a launch. In the words of Flip Flippin', who is the founder and chairman of Capturing Kids' Heart, he says, "If you have a child's heart, you have a child's mind." And Dr. Spencer Kagan says, "By substituting one or more Kagan Cooperative Learning structures for solo worksheet work, there are many benefits for both teachers and students, not the least of which is more success in teaching and learning, and a greater love of the learning process for both teachers and their students." And that's what you'll see at Edison. Thank you for letting me present.
Again, let's give Dr. McDonald another round of applause. Cat, I wanna thank again, uh, we have a, an inspiring leadership program. We have like thirty staff members from the district who aspire to be principals, assistant principals, coordinators in the district. It's a lot of work involved, so I do wanna just commend those folks for coming after work once a month. And this is just a picture from our latest meeting, which was last night. Again, I wanna thank those folks for their dedication to the district, and just again, their grant to stay after work until seven, eight o'clock at night so they could become leaders in the future in this district. We had an amazing event that, um, took place yes, today, and if, like, two weeks ago. We had all of our ninth-grade students in the district. Every single ninth-grade student was invited to Western Michigan University. Um, it's the Bronco Buzz program that was in place years ago. It kinda stopped after COVID, so we brought it back last year. So again, the students come in, they, they, they come to the campus, they get to see, um, activities from cheerleaders, fraternity members, sorority members. They get to learn about the college. They take a tour of the college. But I think the best part is when they get to go to the cafeteria, and everything in the cafeteria for them is free. And if you've never been to that Western Michigan University cafeteria, I mean, it's a huge cafeteria, and students really enjoy that part. And the goal for this is to make sure that our students understand that we expect all of them, when they graduate at the twelfth grade, to take advantage of the Calmezú promise, and even go to college or trade school. That's our goal. So we do that not with just Western Michigan. We also do it with, um, Calmezú Valley College. And again, again, I wanna thank the principals involved. You see a picture of one of our board members. We have board members who took part in this. So again, great event, and I wanna thank all of our high school ninth-grade students, teachers, and principals who participated. I also wanna thank Dr. Dewey, Ms. Saunders, and the rest of the, um, student support team for hosting the wellness event at Lloyd Norwicks on Saturday. We had almost five, more than five hundred community people, members who showed up. We gave away coats, um, food. We gave away different items of clothing. Great event. I think they do this three times a year. Probably our biggest, our most attentive event, events that we have during the year, the ones that Dr. Dewey and Ms. Saunders and her, their teams host. So again, and these are all events to support the community, give back to the community, and you do not have to be a Calmezú public school parent or student to come take part in this. Again, I just wanna thank those folks for their hard work. And also just appreciate the more than five hundred people who came out to participate. And this is a team effort. We had our food service team there. They cooked the food. We had our transportation department. We were running a, a bus loop, taking parents to and from the event, dropping them off in the neighborhood. So again, team effort, great work as always. Again, I wanna thank the teachers, the staff, and especially Dr. Dewey, Ms. Saunders, and the team for setting this up. And then Ms. Coney will talk about the Ugly Sweater Party that's happening later, I guess, next month.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Slade. As Trustee Sholler Barber mentioned, um, our great partners at Communities and Schools have an annual event. This is the eleventh annual Ugly Sweater Party. Uh, KPS participated last year for the first time, and we came in second place. So this is the reveal of our ugly sweater for this year. For those of you who know all about the six-seven, yeah, that's gonna be our, our ugly sweater. The website has not gone live yet. They believe it'll be up tomorrow afternoon to begin. You'll see all the sweaters who are gonna be participating in the, uh, party. And, um, this is a fundraiser for CIS, so the way the funds are raised is you vote for a sweater, and you may do that online at the CIS website. You can also purchase a ticket for thirty dollars to attend the event that is held on December ninth. And, um, the voting will be open through the event. It does close that evening on December ninth. Last year, they raised about seventeen thousand dollars. Those, uh, go back to our students, and one of the projects is they support our students with warm winter wear and, and other supplies, so. Be on the lookout for the CIS website, and please vote for six-seven. And just some reminders for families to fore the schedule next week. Um, on Wednesday, there will not be school and no county programs. Uh, Thursday and Friday, all schools and offices are closed. But we will be wishing everyone a very happy and safe Thanksgiving weekend.
Thank you, Ms. Coney. Um, I do wanna just quickly say for most people, the holiday season is a happy festive time, but we do have students and adults who live in our community where when the holiday season comes, it's a sad time. They're dealing with grief. They're dealing with loss. So I do wanna just make sure everybody checks on their neighbor during the holiday season. We'll be off for a couple of days, and nobody wants to be alone on the holiday, so please, not just check on students, but please check on adults. Because again, although it's a festive time for most, there are some folks who it's a challenging time, so please make sure you do that. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank President Harrison. Um, she took part in a knock-in-talk monthly event that we'll be doing every month. We went out, and we knocked, she, she was with me. We went, we went out and knocked on twenty-five-plus doors to make sure that, to address students who had been absent. And again, I wanna thank her for working with us, and we will be doing that every month this year to try to bring our students into the school buildings. And I will say again, all of our schools improved attendance two years straight, un- unprecedented across the state. And I do wanna just recognize Edison for being one of our model schools for how you run attendance and do attendance. Um, the attendance procedures in place in this building, so thank you.
Next up. Is that your report, Superintendent?
Yes.
Next up, Ms. Kayser, is the sale of land to the Ecumenical Senior Center.
Yes, thank you, President Harrison. It is recommended that the board approve the attached resolution selling a vacant landlocked parcel of real property to the Ecumenical Senior Center. The district owns a vacant point three-eight acre parcel of land located, located near East North Street in Calmezú. The parcel is landlocked and has no direct access. The Ecumenical Center, Senior Center is interested in purchasing this property to enable the construction of a new expanded Ecumenical Senior Center, and has agreed to purchase this land for one thousand dollars plus closing costs. The purchase price is comparable to the appraised value of the land. The attached resolution approves the sale and allows the superintendent or the chief financial officer to execute the offer, as well as any extensions and all other documents necessary and incidental to the sale of the land on behalf of the school district. And this resolution was prepared by Dana Abrams of Clark Hill. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to, um, to sell the land of, to the Ecumenical Senior Center.
Some of.
I have a motion from Vice Chair McGlynn. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second from Vice, or I have a second from Secretary Hill. Do a roll call vote. Trustee Johnson. Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Shola Barber.
Yes.
Trustee Peyton.
Yes.
Trustee Hill.
Yes.
Trustee McGlynn.
Yes.
And I say yes. So that is taken care of. Next is persons requesting to address the board. Seeing none. Other business, we have professional development, professional development requests for Trustee Murphy and myself. Comments by trustees. Trustee McGlynn.
I was lucky enough to attend one of the Bronco Buzz, um, events, and it was just so great to see what Western did and the excitement of the kids that attended. Um, there were promised scholars that spoke, that danced, that fired up, um, the, the, the students, and, um, it was such a great opportunity, and so big, big thanks to Western, um, for putting this on for our students. Also, a big thank you to the Edison community for opening their, their doors. I know it takes a lot when we just say, "Hey, let's have a meeting here." Well, um, you know, things have to be cleaned up and organized, and, uh, you know, the art, art room needs to be put- room needs to be put into a meeting space and all sorts of stuff. So really, really appreciate it, and it's fun to be out in the community. Thank you for the Edison students that came and the Maple Street students. Great to see such active kids. And wow, sixty-one members of the Maple Street team, that's pretty impressive. And also the Around the World Wellness Event, thank you. It's, we see it all the time, our community, our KPS community, coming together and doing things for our students and our community as a whole. So thank you so much for that.
Trustee Shola Barber.
I'm, again, I had the privilege and the fun of going with Trustee McGlynn to the Bronco Bash for Loy Norx. And then, again, I was able to attend this morning at, that had our, the majority of the students, I think, were from Calmezú Central. And a real shout-out and thank you to Western. I mean, that was just amazing how they rolled the carpet out and really got the students enthused about what the college experience is about. It was absolutely wonderful to witness. And I can't even tell you, and our Director of Facilities, I think maybe that's your title, Ms. Jackson, but all this news on the Scratch Kitchen, which we have been working on for so long, or you, not me, you have been working on for so long. It's so exciting to see that coming into a reality and whatever, so thank you for that. I really have to say that it was, it's just heartwarming to hear that President Harrison and Superintendent Slade are so involved in this knocking on doors situation. I think it ties in very well with what Dr. McDonald, Principal of Edison, is doing is trying creative measures and building relationships and getting people to trust and be part of our family. So thank you so much to all of you for doing that. I really have absolute, I was knocked out. I don't know if anyone did any math on this, but Cody, the runner from Maple Street, if you're, if you do a meet in ten-thirty-two, that's a very fast mile. That split has got to be amazing. So shout-out to a young athlete like that, and good luck in his next meet on December thirteenth. And having said that, we've got some news from Calmezú Central on sports. Mr. Straka was at Oakland University today cheering on five swimmers and one diver that qualified for state. I haven't heard the results yet. Boys' basketball is off to an exciting start. Our varsity team at Calmezú Central is receiving a lot of online publicity as a state contender, so that will be an exciting thing to watch. Girls' basketball trials were yesterday, and the athletic director, Mr. Straka, is for sure that the Giant Nation is off to a very optimistic winter season. Loy Norx, eight athletes are competing in the women's swimming and diving D1 finals at Oakland University today. Top finish, top five finish as a team with a huge, was a huge feat. This event officially will end the fall season sports. Winner is off enrolling. The Knights had a thirty-five, twenty-seven-two record against smack opponents in all sports this fall, and hope to build on that this season. The Knights only finished behind St. Joe and Portis Central in overall wins and losses. So that's, that's a pretty vibrant sports program. United Hockey Team is off to a great start with a two-zip record so far. Boys' basketball is ready to go after just over a hundred athletes competed for thirty-two spots on three teams. The varsity will gladly sit back and work hard and be ready for all opponents while flying under the radar. Girls' basketball is completing trials and will have three teams this season. They will be young as they grow in the competitive nature. We are thankful to the community and administrative support on athletic upgrades and overall support as we try to get better and better. And I really have to give a shout-out to the athletic directors from both buildings who helped me do this and helped me, helped me bring this news to the board floor. And it's really, as we saw in these young athletes, it's such a great extension of what we do in the classroom and building relationships and encouraging our students to have a very vibrant three-sixty life. And having said that, and coupling on to what Superintendent Slade said about Thanksgiving, we wish everyone a really safe and very, very secure and warm Thanksgiving, but that isn't the case always. And right now, I want to shout-out to the community. There are so many organizations that are working hard such that they cover as many people in the community and make sure that they have a healthy dinner on Thursday, or that they're getting the supplies and the food and whatever that they need. I think that that's absolutely wonderful. CIS is very involved in the community feast, and then there are various other organizations that are gathering up and doing things, also many churches, many community organizations. It's just wonderful to see. And on the backside of that, I would just like to say, this is fundraising season, and I'm sure all our mailboxes are getting full of letters to request for funds and whatever. And CIS is one of those. I was just involved in signing some of these letters this past week. And I really think it's important to really understand what CIS does and the role they play in our students' achievements, and our students' well-being, and our students' good mental health, and our students feeling very welcomed at schools. So if this letter makes it to you, and if you are able, please, please, think generously about communities and schools. It is a great partner for us. And with that, I wish everyone a big and happy Thanksgiving, and make sure, as Dr. Slade had said, that we're taking care of everyone or looking in on everyone this season.
Secretary Hill.
I just want to thank the staff and the principal and the teachers here at Edison for welcoming us. You can see the close relationship between the teachers, the staff, which translates into confidence and comfort and good leadership. That's what makes it all happen. And that translates to the students. And I was, you know, when you were, I'm reading and when you're going along, and the students feel safe, they feel comfortable, they feel like they have a chance to speak in their classroom. You know, there's always the one kid that talks too much and the one kid that doesn't say anything, but it sounds like you've grown the teachers into having the patience to bring everybody out at their own level, to meet them where they're at about their education. So everyone learns teamwork and everyone learns patience, and listening to one student who may have a hard time articulating or show what they're knowing one way, and the other student might know everything in a whole different way. And I think that bodes a lot, that bodes so well for children growing in the future to accepting everyone. So thank you for bringing us here.
Trustee Murphy.
Thank you. Just as a number of other trustees have said, congratulations to the Edison students as well as the Maple Cross Country team. Dr. McDonald, thank you for the incredible information. I am going to go home and not do my coding homework, and instead I'm going to research all of this, so thank you very much. Thank you for working with Western Michigan, and Western Michigan, thank you for working with us to reinstate the Bronco Buds Program. My children loved it when they went through it, and that is a big part of why at least one of them will be going to Western to finish their bachelor's degree. Excuse me. I wanted to congratulate all of the students at Case Central who participated in the musical SpongeBob. It was hilarious. And not to be biased or anything, but Patrick Starr did an incredible job. So congratulations, Elliot. Loy Norx's musical, which is Shrek, opens in two weeks. That is the fifth of, fifth of December, yes. Tickets are on sale, you can purchase them online, or you can get them at the door. Don't forget your KPS Gold Card that is valid at the musicals as well. And just two real quick things. The very first year I was on the board, we had a presentation about McKinny Vento, and it was the last November meeting. And this being the last November meeting, I did want to mention that our McKinny Vento, which is our Houseless Student Support Monies, typically run out right about now, right around the holidays. So as Trustee Scholler Barber said, please, if you have anything, if you have good-conditioned old clothes, if you have warm coats that you are willing to donate, please do that. They will get into hands that need them. And for those who don't celebrate Thanksgiving, please enjoy the time off and get some rest.
So I don't have much to say. This is the meeting where I get to express the gratitude that I have for being not only in this role, but being able to give my time and talents to this community. And so I just wanted to say that it's my honor to be of service to you. I appreciate all of the things that you allow me to do as a result of being in this role. Thank you, Edison, for allowing us the opportunity to come here. I will say, Superintendent, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to join you on Saturday. Of all of the things that I get to participate in, I think that that is probably the most impactful, because it allows me the opportunity to reinforce my why. I'm grateful for all of the things that come with this time, but echoing with some of what my other trustees said, I do also know that this is a very volatile time, so I'm just asking everyone to be just a little bit more kinder over the next couple of days. And with that being said, I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to Section 8B of the Open Meetings Act, Michigan Code Law fifteen-point-two-six-eight, Section B. The board can meet in closed session to consider the dismissal, suspension, or discipling of a student if the public body is part of the school district, intermediate school district, or institution of higher education that the student is attending, and if the student or the student's parent or guardian requests a closed hearing. So I have a motion.
Motion?
From Trustee Hill, and I need a second from Trustee Shola Barber, Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Shola Barber.
Yes.
Trustee Payton.
Yes.
Trustee Hill.
Yes.
Trustee McGlynn.
Yes.
And I say yes, and I will be transparent, we probably will not be coming back, so you guys are all free to go home. Do we, so, yeah, okay.